Now, for the CE, as soon as you get your license, like, once you get the treasury card, and I showed you what it looked like in the last session, you're gonna get like a card in the mail, a letter, as well as a certificate from the IRS. As soon as you get that card and you're issued an EA license, you can start earning your CPE credit. The providers, the actual CE providers, like, let's say you take a class through CPA Academy. They offer a lot of free courses, Intuit does too, NTP Tax Practice Pro, which is Nicole's CPA provider company that she works for. When you take a class from them, it is the CPE provider's responsibility to report your hours. But you also, like, have to keep track of your certificates, okay? Because maybe the CPE provider goes out of business, or maybe they screw up and they don't get your P-ten right, and they don't report your hours, whatever. Okay, especially with the ethics course, because you need two hours of ethics every single year. Every year, you can't just take like six hours of ethics this year, and then not take any more for the rest of your enrollment cycle. It's two hours of CE of ethics every single year. And it's the CE provider's job to report your hours. You have to give them your P-ten, and you also have to make sure that the course itself is eligible for CE for enrolled agents. A lot of the CE courses that are eligible for CPAs are not gonna give you credit. Because CPAs can take, like, practice management, auditing, all that other stuff, that will qualify them for their CE, their state-level CE licensing, CPE, but it won't count for you. So you have to make sure that it's an IRS-approved CE course. And then, in order to verify it, I recommend you do this at least once a year. Every single year at the end of the year, you log into your IRS P-ten account, where you actually renew your P-ten. And then you click on Verify My CE or My Continuing Education, and it should all show up right there. All right? And I said it, I said this in the last webinar, because somebody asked me a very similar question last week. Dave, the IRS has asked me once, in, I mean, in twenty years, I've been doing this a long time, but they've asked me once to actually verify my hours. And I had to, like, submit my certificates and prove that I had the hours that I had put down on my application. So it does happen. Sometimes they will ask you for proof. So keep track of your CPA certificates, just download them. I don't print them out or anything. I just download the PDFs, or I, you know, in my email, I just use one email, the same email for all my CE. And then when the, when, when they send me the certificates or the links to the certificates or whatever, I just keep them all like in one folder. Well, what do you wanna ask me, Hillary?
So I passed all three parts in mid-November. I'm just sitting here because I wanna bask in your knowledge.
Oh, I am, okay, okay.
And I've, I applied already. Are you saying, I don't think I'm gonna get my card before January first.
I, I don't think you will either, but I mean, I don't think you will either, but you might get it before January first. Like, some people have told me that they're getting it really fast. And I've also had candidates say that it takes, you know, sixty days. It's right around sixty days right now. Is how long it's, the processing is taking. But, you know, that can depend on other factors too. Maybe, maybe there's a, maybe something pops up in your background check, and they wanna verify something a little bit more, or whatever. You know, they wanna make sure that you're compliant. Maybe you have ID theft, and they wanna make sure that the person, that's not you, or whatever. So, anything could delay the processing. Right now, it's about sixty days. I think personally, if you sent it in in November, you will probably get your enrollment card in January or February, maybe.
Sixty days, yeah, it'll be January seventeenth.
Yeah, right around there.
On that line.
Yeah. I've heard of it taking less than that, and I've also heard, especially during the COVID pandemic, it was taking forever. So, may, sometimes even forty-five days. You know, I wouldn't panic until it's been at least sixty days.
But my husband was funny. He was all like, call them today. I'm all like, I'm only at, like, fifteen days, honey.
No, no, I, it's just, it's too soon. It's too soon. You won't get it this soon. I just, you know, I mean, the, there is a possibility that you might get it the last week of December. So, I don't know. But you, I mean, you could deal with it if you get it, and, and then at least you'll have, I mean, you'll have your EA license for this upcoming tax season, which is great. If you pick up, like, even one representation client, or one delinquent, delinquents are so easy, especially if they're just like delinquents without anything complicated, they just haven't filed in ten years, then that can be a huge moneymaker for you. And, you know, you'll, you'll earn back everything that you spent to get the EA license on that one guy. That happens. Okay, Marcos, go ahead. What did you wanna ask me?
Uh, you said for me, I can't wait for the next year to, like, to get my EA license, since I'm gonna get my.
I think.
But accord, accord, according to my social security, the last four, the last number, it's gonna be renewed in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna get my license by this year.
Okay.
It doesn't really matter, or it doesn't really matter now?
No, I mean, if you're, if this is not your enrollment cycle, like, I just, I wasn't gonna ask you personal information about your social, do you know what I mean?
It's alright.
Okay, I wasn't gonna ask you that, but this is my renewal cycle. I just renewed this year. And then, I just renewed this year, and this is my renewal, my renewal cycle. Yeah, I mean, you, you could do what you want. I just, we, I had a candidate contact me like, three weeks ago or two weeks ago, and she might even, even be on tonight. She got, she applied this year, okay? And she got her EA license mid-year, in the middle of the year, or like, October, or something like that. And this is her renewal cycle, so she has to renew again.
Okay.
So she paid for the license, and she paid for the renewal, and then now she has to do it again. Before the end of, like, before the end of the next renewal cycle, so she's out like, you know, at least several hundred dollars, and maybe she doesn't care. Maybe she didn't care, because if you, I, like I said, if you even pick up just one client and it's a rep work, then the EA license will just pay for itself. But, yeah, sometimes it'll happen. In your first renewal cycle, you'll have to renew immediately right after. And personally, I think that's a pain.
I know. One of your videos, I watched it, eh, say for us, if you're gonna follow your Facebook page, you're gonna offer for us sometime the ethnic course, it's for free sometimes. Where is the Facebook page? Is there the Facebook page for H-Hawk International? Is that what you meant?
No, there is a, there is a free, there, let me write, let me write that down. I'll get the link, and then I'll post it into the chat during the break, because I gotta go dig it up. I don't remember the link on the top of my head. For all of you who are actually listening in, many of you, I know, I, this, this is something that I think you should do. I think that you should have a Facebook profile. Make it professional. I mean, if you don't have a Facebook profile, or if you currently have a Facebook profile, it's like for just family and friends, then maybe create a new one that's just like professional for your accounting and your tax business. You know, and then use that Facebook profile just for your EA work. And then, there's like ten groups on Facebook, including a representation group, that you, you have to wait to join until after you become an EA, that are just spectacular, like, all very experienced accounting professionals. It's tax pros only, so you don't have any stupid questions from clients. And they, you learn so much that way, especially if you're a sole practitioner. Like, at the beginning, when I started in this business, I was just like a bookkeeper and a payroll accountant, well, payroll provider. I, I can't even say accountant, because I was just like, did a little payroll for a church. And when I started in this business, I felt like I was like floundering. I didn't understand how to do anything. Initially, I didn't work for a firm, and it wasn't until after I started working for a firm, that I had like someone else to bounce ideas off of, that I really started learning. And now, that was kind of a long time ago, before Facebook was even a thing. So now, there's like, you can have Facebook, and you can have LinkedIn, and all of these professional groups that you could join, where you can actually learn from other experienced tax professionals. And so far, in my experience, the best groups that I have found are on Facebook, okay? Today, we're gonna talk about questions for part three. I'm gonna talk a lot about representation questions, but this is the information that's gonna help you when you actually become an EA to do rep work. Now, once again, well, I'm gonna include examples from released sample questions from older exams, as well as questions from the HAWK, uh, Question Bank, PASkey textbooks and stuff like that. Please don't ask any questions from other providers' materials. I had another candidate in the forum, we had more than one, like, posting actual GLIME materials from GLIME. Please don't do that. GLIME materials are trademarked and copyrighted by GLIME. So I, I can't, we can't post those publicly. We don't own those copyrights, GLIME does, okay? So, don't ask me to answer any of those questions. I don't want a copyright violation issue, okay? Now, I do suggest, oh, but anything off of the IRS website is fair game, just so you know. You can ask me anything from the IRS publications and all of that, and if I don't know the answer, I will look it up. But nothing from another provider's copyrighted materials, please, okay? Now, once again, I do recommend joining Laura Stahl EA Study Group on Facebook. She helps us in the forums. She's one of the forum administrators on HAWK. It's just EA Study Group is the URL, and I will post it, post it to the chat. You can download older IRS sample questions on the PASkey online website. We still have a placeholder website there, even though all of our materials, like the LMS has actually been transferred to HAWK. We still have, I still have the PASkey online website as active. And if you go to this page on the PASkey online website, and you scroll down to the bottom, you can download older EA exams that the IRS has released, and I have some going back to like two thousand and four. So you can kind of read those older exams and download them and use them for your studies. Oh, okay. This is the link that you provided. So Maricela is helping me out, okay? Yeah, that's it. Thanks, Maricela. She posted it in the chat. Maricela posted the group in the chat. It's Tax Pro CPE and CE Events. And then, of course, if you want free CE, you can always use CPA Academy. I usually recommend them, and then follow the IRS webinar. IRS webinars, check at, at least once a month, you'll be able to get webinars there. Okay, let me close this window. All right, let's get into the session. Can you see my slides? Okay, so let's go into the part three study questions, and this is a forum question that someone else posed in the HAWK forums, okay? Damien received a statutory notice of deficiency in two thousand and twenty-two. And just so you know, this is not a client question that he had. This is one of the HAWK MCQs, but he asked us to clarify this. Damien ignores the notice and does not contact the IRS or timely file a petition with the tax court. So he actually received a notice of deficiency, and he ignored it, which is not uncommon for people to do, okay? This is called blowing the ninety-day deadline, or blowing the NOD deadline. Many, many times, commonly, tax accountants will say that. They'll say, he blew the petition deadline or the tax court deadline, okay? What will happen next? Okay, A, the Internal Revenue Service will assess the tax it says Damien owes. B, the Internal Revenue Service will issue a levy notice. C, the Internal Revenue Service will issue a thirty-day letter. D, Damien will be required to post a deposit before being allowed to request an extension for time to file a petition. And this question actually seems to stump a lot of students. It's only been, it's only being answered correctly on the first attempt by about thirty-six percent of the students, or just about one-third. So a lot of people are getting this wrong, okay? And the user or the candidate stated this when they, when they posted this to the forum. He said, the ninety-day notice comes after the assessment, so how could you receive a ninety-day notice and then an assessment? Okay, now, the answer to this question is that the Internal Revenue Service will assess the tax that it says Damien owes. Which is true. If you get a notice of deficiency, usually this is how it goes. You have a taxpayer who is getting audited, okay? The IRS sends them a notice, and it, like, an initial notice, that's thirty-day notice, not the ninety-day notice. They're supposed to respond and get in touch with the IRS. So, many times, it's something simple, like, oh, I, I left a ten ninety-nine off the return, or maybe it's something even like ID theft, somebody's working under their social, and there's a W-two out there that doesn't belong to them. And they, they get a notice from the IRS. This isn't always the way it goes, but ma- much of the time, this is the way it goes. They'll get an initial thirty-day notice from the IRS. And the IRS is, oh, there seems to be an error with your return, or maybe, will you help clarify this issue for us, blah, 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 blah? And then, they ignore it. Many times, people won't even open the letter. Real, really. Then, the IRS will then send a ninety-day letter. They, they're supposed to give the taxpayer some time to respond to the thirty-day notice, but many times, people won't. They will not respond to it. They'll ignore it. They won't understand it, whatever. Sometimes they don't get the notice. They've moved and they won't get the notice. That happens too. Then, the IRS will send the taxpayer a notice of deficiency, which is a ninety-day notice. Basically, the IRS is issuing them what's called a proposed assessment. A notice of deficiency is not an assessment, it's a proposed assessment. The IRS is saying, we think you owe this. If you don't think that you owe this, you need to get in touch with us. And you need to file a tax court petition if you, if we don't solve this issue within ninety days. Okay? So, the notice of deficiency is a proposed assessment, which, which, which confuses taxpayers as well as newer preparers alike. Nothing is final yet. The assessment is just proposed. When you get that thirty-day notice, the IRS is just asking you to clarify something. If you ignore it, then they send you a ninety-day notice, or a notice of deficiency. And the IRS says, hey, this is what we think you owe. You need to, you need to clear this up for us, okay? And if they ignore it again, then the IRS will assess the tax, and the taxpayer is gonna owe the tax immediately, basically, after that. But a notice of deficiency is not an assessment, it's a proposed assessment. As, as long as that ninety-day deadline hasn't passed, it's a legal notice. The ninety-day letter is a legal notice, in which the IRS determines the taxpayer's tax deficiency. But you can file a tax court petition, basically, and that will just stop the clock running. And you will be able to contest the tax in court. It is not assessed yet. Okay, but if you lose, but if you blow that deadline, that ninety-day deadline, and you don't file a tax court petition, or you don't get the problem solved with the IRS, then you lose your right to appeal to the tax court. That doesn't mean that you have no options left, but it's a lot more difficult after you've blown the deadline. Because the tax court is the only court where you don't actually have to pay the tax first. Any other court, you have to pay the tax and then sue the IRS for a refund. Which many times, people don't have the money to pay the tax and sue the IRS for a refund. Because once you go to district court, court, or whatever, wherever you, you're gonna be challenging the tax, then you, you're gonna have to pay lawyers, in addition to any court fees that you might have. But the tax court, you don't have to pay the tax in order to contest the notice of deficiency in tax court. You wanna join in here and add something, Nicole? Go ahead.
Sure. So, I was also just gonna add, like, the IRS is sometimes up to fifty percent wrong. So, once they send that CB two thousand, fifty-fifty, it's right or wrong. So you have to, you know, you have to confirm it and, and see, see what it's all about. So, that's what I was saying in the chat. And we also, we call the notice of deficiency your ticket to tax court. Sometimes, we honestly even advise, we'll wait for the, the ninety-day letter, because that is your ticket to tax court. Once you get that, then we know. It just moves along. It's just a step in the process, so.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to add.
Okay. So, a ninety-day, a ninety-day notice is also called a proposed assessment. A taxpayer still has the ability to challenge, challenge the notice in court. If the taxpayer does not file a petition with the tax court and lets the ninety days pass without responding, the assessment is then final, and the taxpayer loses their ability to appeal to the tax court and immediately owes the tax. There are, there are things the taxpayer can do at this point, like, sometimes you can request audit consideration, that sort of thing, but it gets much harder, because the tax has been assessed at this point. You're basically, you're basically begging the IRS to reopen the case at that point. So it's much harder once the ninety-day deadline has passed and/or been ignored. And this is the link that, on the IRS website, that talks about the notice of deficiency. Now, I also want you to understand that, from a legal standpoint, sometimes, sometimes taxpayers won't, won't be able to respond to the notice of deficiency, because they have a case that can't be tried in tax court. All right, it'll be something that will be outside of the tax court's purview. An example of that is anything having to do with Title Thirty-One. So any kind of F-bar issue, any kind of international tax issue, anything like that, the tax court doesn't see those cases. Tax court is only Title Twenty-Six, which is income tax. So, there are certain things that you can't take to the tax court. And if, for example, is like an F-bar penalty issue, you're gonna have to pay a lawyer, if you wanna contest that. Because can't go to tax court with those, with those types of penalties, okay? All right. SCE question. Now, this is a question from a prior exam that was released. Actual question, this is the IRS's own verbiage. A disagreement with the Internal Revenue Service can be taken to the tax court if, A, it pertains to income tax, B, a statutory notice of deficiency has been issued, C, a petition is filed within ninety days from the date a statutory notice of deficiency is mailed, one hundred and fifty days if it is addressed to the taxpayer outside of the United States. And remember that hundred and fifty-day deadline, okay? The IRS has tested on that before. It's in prior exams. If the person has a foreign address on their tax return, like, they live in Russia, or Israel, or France, or whatever, and that's the, and they use a foreign address on their tax return, they have a hundred and fifty days to respond, okay, not ninety. Or D, all of the above. Go ahead and put your answer in the chat, and I'll check. Okay, looks like everybody got this one right. It's D, it's all of the above, okay? So, it has to pertain to income tax, number one. A statutory notice of deficiency has to be issued. You cannot file a petition with the tax court if you don't have a statutory notice of deficiency. You gotta wait for the ninety-day letter first. You cannot file a petition in tax court in advance. You can only file it once the statutory notice of deficiency has been issued. Okay, so if you're still haggling with IRS, after you've received a thirty-day notice, but you haven't received the ninety-day notice yet, then you can't file a petition yet. Ninety-day notice has to be issued first. And then, the petition has to be filed, the tax court petition has to be filed from the date a statutory note of deficiency is mailed. Okay. Which statement is not correct? Okay, once again, this is an actual question. So many times on part three, this is the type of verbiage that you'll see. They'll ask you to find the incorrect answer, or they'll ask you to, like, confirm a negative or whatever. So this is the type of tricky wording that really, you're gonna see more on part three than any other part. Which statement is not correct concerning the small tax case procedure of the tax court? A, the disputed tax must be fifty thousand dollars or less for any one year or period. B, the decision is final. C, no appeal is available for cases decided under this procedure. And D, the tax must have been assessed and paid before the tax court proceedings. And then I want you to take a guess. I know that this is a tough one, and you might not know it, but I won't tell anybody if you get it wrong, promise. See my cup, my brand new cup? Usually, it's my monkey cup. I have a monkey cup, but this one now says, don't forget to be awesome. Isn't that great? Don't forget to be awesome. I really like turtles too, but I haven't been able to find a good turtle cup yet. If you find a place that has really fancy, great turtle cups, you tell me. That's, that's the next on my list, is a cute turtle cup. That's the kind of stuff that I collect. I know, it's ridiculous, but.
Are you drinking coffee or tea?
It's tea. I can't drink coffee past like three PM, but I'm, because it'll keep me awake.
Yeah.
But during tax season, I drink coffee like so much. It's so bad, I know. My teeth are gonna look like candy corn, like, I drink so much coffee.
I'm the same way.
I'm not gonna stop. It's not, it's never gonna happen. I'm gonna drink it forever. Okay, I'm now, Hillary says, I'm now an owl collector. I love owls too. It's like my, I love, I love owls and turtles. I, I have, I like, I have a whole colle- collection of monkey cups too, where the monkeys are like, see no evil, hear no evil, like that. And I love those too, but, yeah, I love owls too. Because they're smart, right? They're supposed to be smart. I don't know if owls are smart in real life. They might be stupid. But I still think they're so cute, especially like the baby ones. Okay. It's ridiculous. Okay, so the answer is D. Yeah, most of you got it right. I'm so proud of y'all. Uh, the tax must have been assessed and paid before the tax court proceedings. So you do not have to pay the tax, if you go before the tax court. Any other court, you have to pay the tax first, and then sue the IRS for a refund. And then, I'm telling you, once the IRS has that money, they do not wanna let go of it. So, if it's a situation where you have paid the tax, and, and you are suing the IRS for a refund, don't like, make any plans for Christmas shopping with that money, because it's gonna be like a decade before you win against the IRS. I mean, sometimes it happens, but a win in the tax court is a lot easier than a win like in district court or federal court. I'll just tell you that right now. Okay, oh, I have three owls that do the hear no evil and see no evil and speak no evil. Yeah, if you see like cute owl mugs, like especially on Amazon, where I can just order them, please tell me. I'm always looking for cute cups. Okay, so this is actually copied and pasted from the tax, the US Tax Court website. I'm not gonna read through this whole thing, because it's a big, long deal. But there's a couple of things that I think that you need to remember for the test, because the IRS has asked about some, like, specific dollar amounts with regards to the small tax case procedure. They will ask you, what's the maximum of the, of the deficiency that you can actually still request a small tax case procedure? So, you don't have to, you don't have to use the small tax case procedure, just so you know. It's optional. Nobody is ever forced to do it. But many times, they will, the taxpayer will choose the small tax case procedure, because it's supposed to be simpler, it's less formal than the regular cases, and usually, your case will be heard faster, okay? If you choose not to use the small tax case procedure, or if it's a situation where it's more than a maximum dollar amount that's allowable under a small tax case procedure, then the court will just file your case as a regular case. So it's either a regular case or a small tax case. The big drawback to using the small tax case procedure is that once the decision is made in a small tax case, it's final. You cannot appeal it at that point. So if you decide to use the small tax case procedure, then, once the decision is made by the judge, then that, it's, it's final, it's a done deal. You can't go on to like, appeal it later. Now, I put the dollar limits right here. I think you kind of need to remember that most of the time, the dollar limits are gonna be around fifty thousand. Sometimes it will depend on the type of tax that's being assessed. For example, right here, if you go to number five, if you seek a review of a notice of determination concerning relief from joint and several liability. Relief from joint and several liability is when you have filed a joint tax return with somebody, okay? And that somebody, the ex, your ex, usually, okay? Usually, is when the ex or your spouse might go under audit. This happens really frequently with, like, maybe the husband or the wife has a business, and then the business goes under audit, and they get a huge amount of assessed tax on the business. But remember, it's a joint tax return, so the IRS can now go after both spouses, right? Both spouses are equally liable for all the tax shown on the tax return, regardless of whether it's one person's business or not. You file jointly with somebody, and that's one of the big drawbacks of filing jointly. If you don't wanna be on the hook for your spouse's tax, then the solution is to file MFS. And a lot of people don't wanna do that, because they don't wanna lose the credits. But one of the most common petitions that goes before the tax court is this, the, a review of a notice of determination concerning relief from joint and several liability, because when somebody, when the taxpayers request innocent spouse relief, for example, it's one of the things that the IRS will usually just deny flat out the first time around. it's one of the things that the IRS will usually just deny flat out the first time around. Really common for the IRS to just say no. So in this case, if you want, if you, if it's one of these where it's a joint and several liability case, and it's innocent spouse relief, then the only way that you can request a small tax case procedure is if the amount of spousal relief sought is less than fifty thousand dollars for all years combined. Because many times if the IRS audits a self-employed person and they find a bunch of chicanery, they won't just open one year. They'll go back and they'll say, okay, well, you've been like doing all this shady stuff. So we're seeing all these kind of deductions that you shouldn't be taking. We're gonna go back and we're gonna open three years. They'll do that. And if you have a situation like this and it's, and you want a small tax case procedure and it's joint and several liability case, and the amount that the IRS is trying to assess is more than fifty thousand, then you can't request a small tax case procedure. Okay, if it's a joint and several liability. And then there's some cases that can't be, where you can't request a small tax case procedure. An example of that is a whistleblower case. Okay, and I've discussed whistleblowers in the webinar. Whistleblowers like when you have somebody who's like tattletales. Their little tattletale, they tattletale on a business or an ex. Many times it's an ex or a family member or something like that. And they'll tattletale to the IRS and tell them, hey, IRS, this person's a tax cheat. And the, and it's a whistleblower action, so that person that did the tattletaling is trying to get money. They will get like whistleblower award. And many times the IRS doesn't wanna pay out a whistleblower award. So they'll, they'll ask the tax court, um, they'll, they'll file a petition in order to try to get their whistleblower award. But if it's a whistleblower award, it can't be tried under the small tax case procedure. Okay, so I think you need to know what's on this slide for the test. And you might not ever have to deal with any of this because most of you are probably not gonna be lawyers and you're not gonna be trying cases in the tax court. But, um, you know, you, you need to know this for the exam. They're gonna ask you about small tax cases and tax court cases and filing a petition with the tax court. It's something that you need to know. Okay? All right, and this is an example of the simplified petition on the US tax court website. There's a link in the slides here. All right, anonymous group question. I hope to become an EA. I know that the IRS does, uh, some checking on our personal tax filings to be sure we are and I have been compliant. Okay? This is someone who asked a question in Laura's, uh, study group. Okay, it was an anonymous question. I don't know who this person was. Um, once again, I do can, I do suggest joining that group. Um, uh, it's a lot of different EA candidates. Not everybody's using pass key. A lot of people are using other study materials, so it's open to basically everybody, but you gotta answer the questions. And your profile can't look scammy, can't be like a profile that looks like a scam profile. You gotta have a picture, you know? Just otherwise Laura will block you because she gets tons of scammers that try to join that group all the time in order to post spam. Okay, this person said, I have been compliant, but my adult daughter has not. So she has an adult daughter who has basically delinquent returns and problems with IRS. She has not updated her address with the IRS, even though she hasn't lived in my home for eight years. So as far as they know, she is still in my household. And of course, this person is an adult now. So her mother can't like file anything on her behalf. Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, once your child is an adult, then they're signing their own tax returns. They're gonna be dealing with the IRS on their own. I mean, you can represent them if you have a Form twenty eight forty eight. But if you, if you don't, then that's an adult human being, even if they're still living at home. So they're gonna be dealing with their own stuff once they become adults. Okay, so she can't like file a change of address form for her daughter. Her daughter is the one that has to do it. Okay? She hasn't filed her taxes since she owed money about four years ago, so she's over four years delinquent. She's been highly resistant to resolving the issue, even though the COVID money would probably offset whatever she owed. I don't know how much she owes, and she would probably start getting refunds again. She did get a communit- a communication from the IRS at my home last year, right? Cause it's, they're going to mom's address, the IRS notices. I don't know what the communication was. And she doesn't remember getting it, which means she might not have even opened it after I gave it to her, which is also once again not uncommon. Many people are too scared and they will not open the IRS correspondence. Hey Nicole, have you ever had, have you ever had, uh, rep client come in with like a bag of letters and none of the letters are opened?
I was just gonna say unopened enveloped.
All the time, right?
Yeah, I don't know what this is. I don't know what to do. We didn't open it. How would you know?
Yeah.
Yes.
Happens all the time. And all have people, um, I've had people where they're terrified of opening the letter and it's just some random notice, especially during COVID. And where they were especially like, when they were getting like COVID, uh, what was the COVID like stimulus or whatever?
The stimulus payments.
Exactly. They would send a letter, the IRS would send a letter to them and they're like, what's this letter? You know, it's like, open it, just open it and tell me what's on the letter or send me a scan. I'm not gonna go to your house and open it for you.
It can't hurt you.
Yeah, exactly. It's like there's a poisonous snake in it. I've seen that multiple times. Okay? So she's been highly resisted solving the issue, blah, blah, blah. How hard do I have to push her? I've been trying to get to gently encourage her and have offered to help her through the process. If it doesn't affect my EA application, then an adult at my address has unpaid taxes and unfilled returns, I won't amp up my efforts. If it does, I don't quite know what to do. Okay? So the answer is, my answer was that, that if you have non-compliance with a family member, it's not gonna affect your EA application. Okay, that's a different person. That's a different human person. Now, um, I will say that if you have a spouse that has non-compliance, then I wouldn't recommend filing with that spouse. Or if you have a spouse that is doing shady stuff, then I wouldn't recommend filing with them, obviously, file M F S. But the, the non-compliance of a family member is not going to affect your own EA application. Okay, you have to be compliant with your own tax returns, your own tax filings and your own taxes. But someone else that lives at your, in your households, you know, maybe you have like a deadbeat brother or something that's living with you, that's not gonna affect your EA application. Okay, you can't force another adult human person to do anything if they're an adult already. I mean, I mean, with the, with the rare exception of maybe if you have power of attorney or conservatorship over that person. But most of the time, that's not the case. So you're, that person will deal with the problem when it gets too big to ignore. Usually that's when the IRS starts garnishing their wages. Once they start garnishing their wages or their social security or whatever else, whatever government payment they might have, then usually they'll deal with the issue. Just make sure you don't have any joint bank accounts, loans, or other credit cards, et cetera. Laura added, Laura Stahl in the group also added a good comment for this, that her tax issues have no implications to your EA status. You can tell her that the issues with the IRS and or the state, as the state might also be a factor if she has to file a state tax return, and ignoring notices and not filing tax return could result, if she owes in the end, in her bank account being frozen. That's the reason why I said, don't have any joint bank accounts with this person. Don't have any loans, you know, to, just try not to have anything joint with a person who has tax issues. Because I have had situations where a client of mine who did ha- who was compliant was, had like a joint person on their bank account and that person had problems with the IRS. And the IRS, oh, and then the F T B, Franchise Tax Board, if you're in California, they will drain the whole bank accounts. And then, and then you're stuck trying to get money back from the Franchise Tax Board, which is nearly impossible. So do, just don't have joint bank accounts with that person if you think that that person might have like tax liens or problems in the future. Okay? It won't happen overnight and it's not the first step tax authorities will take, but it will happen sooner or later if she continues to ignore notices. These notices may contain warnings about a levy, which will include all of her assets, not just her bank accounts. So the sooner she takes responsibility, the better. All right.
I was gonna say funny when a lot of rep clients, it, they don't open any of the letters until the levy letter. Once that levy letter comes now, that then they show up in your office because that, that sparks action.
Yeah, it does. It sparks action. Nobody wants a levy against their home. They don't want a levy against their bank account and that's, that's the one that terrifies them to doing something. Yeah. And this is a part two question, but it was in the forum and I thought it was a good question, so I thought I would add it. Does a dog breeder report on Schedule F? Is it a farm? And the answer is no. Pet breeders, if you are breeding pets, not for human consumption, obviously. They're gonna report their income and loss on Schedule C, not on Schedule F. The term farm does include animal breeding. But if it's dogs and cats and stuff, dogs and cat breeders, that's not gonna be on Schedule F. Now, you really wanna use Schedule F if you can use Schedule F, because Schedule F has a much lower audit rate. A much, much lower than Schedule C. And it also allows you, if the person is a farmer, then they get all these special rules for estimated taxes, where you don't have to pay estimated tax during the year. So why wouldn't you file on Schedule F and treat it as a farm if you could? So if it is qualifying as a farm, don't think like, oh, what difference does it make if it's a Schedule C or a Schedule F? Because the tax is gonna be the same. That's true. Most of the time, the tax is gonna be the same. And the self-employment tax is gonna be the same. But you know, farmers get to delay recognition of income in some cases. They also get to delay paying their estimated taxes until the following year and all these other special rules. And they get to do, um, income averaging on Schedule J. So if you, if you do have a client that qualifies as a farm, you really want to report their income and loss on the Schedule F and not the Schedule C. Okay, so the term farm includes the breeding and raising of livestock. That would include like goats, uh, horses, pigs, whatever, all of that. Poultry, which the reason why it's considered separate than livestock is because poultry actually has a lot of special rules when it comes to like being treated as a capital asset. For the most part, you can't treat poultry as a capital asset, but you can have like a bull that's a capital asset, like one that's used just being held for breeding or insemination, or a stallion, like a horse's stallion. Let's say you have a stallion and it's like a million dollar stallion that you're, that you're holding for breeding, then that's an asset. It's not inventory. But most of the time, you're, like poultry is not gonna be treated as assets. It's poultry is almost invariably going to be inventory, because they only live like a year or less than a year. Okay, and then fish, so like tilapia farms and shrimp farms and stuff. Bees, so if you're a beekeeper, like you don't actually consume the bees, right? We don't eat bees. But you consume the honey, which is like a natural, uh, product of the hive. And then silkworms, which is not something that you eat, right? Silk produces like silk for clothing. Okay, so it's not always gonna be something that you eat. It can be silkworms, like where it's a farm that produces cloth. Um, oysters, which is like a seafood, llamas, which I don't know if people eat llamas, but you know, I know that they shear them and make, you know, what is it? Socks and stuff. So that, that would all be on Schedule F. Schedule F would also include farms that were plantations, ranches, ranges and orchards and groves, like an almond orchard or peaches or something like that. Okay? And I wanted to show you where this was. If you look on the, uh, bottom of Schedule F, where it tells you the principal agricultural and activity codes. Here they are, just so you know. If it's something that doesn't fit into a neat category, like you don't actually see beekeeping on here. It, beekeeping actually does have its own N, N C I S code. It has its own business code. But like my software doesn't have, doesn't have the codes that are that specific. So usually if I can't find these specific ones, I'll just put other animal production. If it doesn't fit under one of the neat categories, it's not like beef cattle or something like that. Currently I have one farm. I only do one. Farm is gonna include any of these, forestry and logging, animal production. Um, aquaculture would be like fish farming or oyster farming or whatever. And then it says right here in this little box, do not file Schedule F to report the following. Income from breeding, raising, or caring for dogs, cats, or other pet animals. Now, I know sometimes maybe this is a gray area. Because people might raise hamsters, but I know that there's people that eat hamsters. So rabbits, people eat rabbits. I actually think rabbits are kinda tasty and I've eaten many of them myself. So there, um, yeah, I know that there's a gray area there with some types of animals where they can possibly be pets and they can also possibly be food. But it, most of the time, what you're gonna see in actual practices, people will be asking you for dog breeding. That's the most common thing that you'll see, dog or, or cat breeding. And if it's something like that, then that's gonna be on Schedule C and not Schedule F. Okay? So forum question, I'm not sure where I heard this, but I know I was listening to a webinar for part three and the host touched on the case, um, using Form twenty one oh six. Now, the Form twenty one oh six is that form for employee business expenses. It still exists because like reservists, like military reservists are still allowed to use it and a few other narrow subsets of employees. But for the most part, the twenty one oh six is not being used anymore by most taxpayers. There was a case several years ago where a nurse who was working for a hospital as an employee, she was an administrator for the hospital, she deducted her entire master's degree. I think she went to like, uh, DeVry or Phoenix, University of Phoenix or something like that. And she deducted her entire master's degree and she won the case. Because it was back when you could still deduct employee business expenses on the twenty one oh six. The name of the case is Lori Singleton Clark versus IRS. She successfully defended her deduction for her MBA college tuition before the tax court. We're talking about an individual taxpayer who was able to deduct her tuition on the Form twenty one oh six as an employee business expense as a miscellaneous itemized deduction. And she won the case. So it was Lori Singleton Clark versus the IRS. The decision was made before the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. So at that time, employee business expenses were still deductible by most taxpayers and that's part of the reason why she won. You're not gonna be able to do that for any employees now because this type of employee business expense would not be allowable under the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act until after the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act changes sunset, which is two thousand and twenty six. Okay, it's right around the corner, I guess. It's just a couple of years. And we don't know what Congress is gonna do. They might actually, I think the IRS was kinda pissed off about this case. So you never know, they might put something in the law that says you can't deduct your MBA as an employee business expense. But that's the case, if you ever wanna look it up. Somebody has asked me before, taxpayer, um, people have asked me before, do you believe that like this case makes it so that if you have, for example, someone who is like a single shareholder of a C corp or a single shareholder of an S corp, if they would be able to, to make this same argument, that it would improve their existing profession and therefore make it deductible. Okay, um, my answer is that, you know, I, I don't know. This case is, was kind of a different situation. I mean, I feel like maybe if you wanted to make that argument before the tax court, like let's say you're an enrolled agent and you don't have a master's degree, and then you go to school and you take tax and you get a master's in accountancy or a master's in tax. Um, and then you have your C corporation or your S corporation reimburse you for it or pay for it outright. You might be able to argue, based on this case, that that in, that improves your existing profession or that improves, you know, that it, it benefits the corporation for you to have that MBA. And, um, I think that's probably a pretty good argument to make. But, um, I, I've never done this for myself. It's, it's out there, it's sitting out there that, and it's a case that the IRS lost. Okay, just in case you have somebody who asks you, because this is a pretty common question from clients, can I deduct my master's degree? This is just a link to the case, but if you look up this name, uh, Lori Singleton Clark, it's not a very common name, obviously, because it's like hyphenated and long. It'll come right up, it'll pop right up. I am a little confused. This is a forum question. A tax firm cannot hire a disbarred tax preparer or an enrolled agent that is disbarred. So this is a circular two thirty provision. You cannot hire, if you're an enrolled agent, you have an, an EA license, or if you're a CPA or a lawyer, either one. You cannot hire a disbarred person. If the IRS has stripped, or if the, like for example, if it's a CPA and the Board of Accountancy has stripped them of their license and they've been disbarred, or if it's an enrolled agent and the IRS has stripped them of their license and they've been disbarred, you cannot hire them. Period. You cannot hire them to work for you, even if it's not in a capacity of preparing tax returns. So you can't say, oh, hey, John. So you can't say, oh, hey, John, um, or hey, Melinda. You've lost your license because you were, you know, writing forged checks or forging checks or money laundering or whatever. And I know you're hard up, but I'll, I'll hire you and you could just be my secretary. You can't do that. So you can, as an enrolled agent, you can't hire a disbarred individual, okay? But a disbarred person can't actually prepare tax returns. Okay, and that's because of the Loving case. And then the James Sexton case, which Karen Hawkins um tried to litigate in Nevada. And the IRS lost that case. So you can't hire somebody who's been disbarred. But if it's a disbarred individual, they can actually file tax returns for the general public. And that includes people with multiple felonies. So the IRS can't stop them, and that's because of the outcome of the Loving case and the Sexton case. The Loving case was the first case, and it all came down to like, it all happened because of the. What was that exam? The registered tax return prepare exam. And a bunch of tax account, tax preparers got together and they said, we don't feel like the IRS has the authority to mandate us to take a test. And they sued and they won. The court said the IRS doesn't have the explicit authority to force. Preparers to take a mandatory exam, which the IRS was trying to make the registered tax return prepare exam mandatory. And they did for a while. And I even took, I even took it. I took the registered tax return prepare exam back when it was offered. I was already an EA. I just kinda took it to take it. Right around two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, it was being offered by the IRS. And the IRS did try to make it mandatory and they lost. Then after the Loving case was lost by the IRS. An attorney called James Sexton. Who was a disbarred attorney from South Dakota, was it a South, one of the Dakotas, one of the South Dakota or North Dakota. He had four felonies for wire fraud and one felony for money laundering. It was five felonies. He was preparing tax returns in Las Vegas in uh Nevada. And a client actually reported him. A client reported him to the IRS and said, hey, this guy's like disbarred and he's trying to give me tax advice and prepare tax returns. She reported, the client was a, a woman, and she reported him to the O P R. James Sexton filed suit against the IRS so that he prepared, he prepared tax returns. He said, because of the Loving case, because the IRS lost the Loving case, they don't have the authority to regulate me. And they don't have the authority to prevent me from preparing tax returns. And then once again, the IRS lost. Now, what the IRS can do is revoke your E F I. It's really hard to run a tax practice without an E F I. And E F I is what allows you to um electronically file returns. So if the IRS revokes your E F I, then you're gonna be sending in all your returns on paper, and that's. I mean, in the modern era, like really that doesn't work. But they couldn't actually stop him from preparing tax returns, okay? But as an enrolled agent. Once you become an EA and you have your own tax practice, you can't hire a disbarred individual to work for you. Okay, that's a circular two thirty violation. Okay. That's the end of this study session. Please check out our other educational tax webinars.